I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the February 1st regular school board meeting of Marshalltown District. Welcome to all of you who are with us, and welcome to those individuals who will be watching us on live stream or delayed broadcast. Allow me to introduce the individuals at the table with me. On the right, we have Nico Aguirre and Sean Heitman. On the left, we have Jen McGuinness, Mike Miller, and Sarah Faltis. At the center table with me, to my right, is Paulette Newbold. She's the Board Secretary. And to my left is Dr. Theron Schutte, the Superintendent of Schools, and I am Bea Niblock. We have a time for public comment during this board meeting, which is directly after the consent agenda. If you're here to visit with the board during public comment time, please sign on the pink sheet on the speaker table so that we can call on you when the time comes. Please remember that you will be allowed five minutes to make your comments, and that the board will not be able to reply or make comments back to you according to our board policy, but we thank you for your comments. Please read with me the mission for the Marshalltown Community School District. "We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences." Stand as you're able and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
There are, and I apologize for the number of amendments. This is pretty unusual. 103 National School Counseling Week proclamation was added once we were aware that that was this week, February 1st through the 5th. 2.04 is a partial topographic survey of Frank-- the Franklin Bleacher area for which we're entertaining demolition of from Clapsaddle Garber, and we just received that today. So in order to keep things moving with the researching and investigating what it will take, we'd ask that be recommended for approval today. 402, the proposal statement was incorrect in the agenda. It should have been proposing to amend bell and start times effective February 16th of 2021 in conjunction with the legislative mandate versus the 2021-22 school year. 404 has a board presentation attached now. We didn't have that up before. 4.10, we removed the COVID pandemic resolution, which we need to revise. We're still waiting on a few of those revisions, but that'll come before you later based on what current federal or state restrictions are. 505.5, we've asked that we move the agenda topic on the financing-- financial proposal for the tax sale, bond sale, earlier in the meeting to accommodate Matt Glasvie from Piper Jeffrey. So both the-- that'll come right on the heels of the 103B discussion that I'm enupping, and Matt Kretzinger will have. And then lastly, there was a board policy to be reviewed, which was 5072 E2 parental authorization and release for the administration of medication. We're tabling that. There's a few things that need to be worked out before that comes before you.
Can you remind me when we get to those?
Yep.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Second.
Aguirre, Faltis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0. Mr. Siders?
Tonight, for recognitions, we will have a couple of students, third graders, from Rogers Elementary who have taken part in the Rogers Mileage Club this year. The Mileage Club has had a record number of miles walked, jogged, or sprinted, and so we're happy that these kids are getting outside and being healthy, especially under the circumstances we've all been under for the past several months. So Nicole Bolivar, who is the PE teacher over there at Rogers, is here, and she will talk about the Mileage Club and some of the cool new things that they have going on with the Mileage Club this year. And then we also have a few students here. One is Veda Smith, and then Bennett Tatey is also here. They're both, as I said, third graders.
I just kind of wanted to explain the Mileage Club a little bit. It's been about 15 years in the making that we actually have a physical place to incorporate our Mileage Club, but it's something that we've been continuing to implement at Rogers in an effort to increase the amount of physical activity that students receive. PE is not an everyday activity for them, so this is a way that we can help get them a little bit more physical activity during their recess times. As PE teacher, I want to provide them with that and also pair that with a positive experience so that they can continue, as they age, to participate in physical activities. We do that through our Mileage Club. Excuse me. Through our Mileage Club, students have the opportunity, it's a choice-based activity, to participate, and these are two of the students that have done an excellent job participation-wise. We do recognize students every time they reach a five-mile marker, a 10, a 15, 20, 25. We also recognize the class that has walked a combined amount of miles or the highest amount of miles over each quarter. These two represent Mrs. Vincent's third-grade class, and they walked 130 miles during the second quarter. So collectively, our grades, kindergarten through fourth grade, have walked 635 miles just since September. So they're definitely taking advantage of the physical activity opportunity that we're providing and that we hope to continue to provide. I'll turn it over to the students if you have some questions for them.
Good job, kids.
How much do you have to run or walk each day to get 100 miles? You know? A lot, huh? A lot.
So is this something you do before school, after school?
In recess.
During recess time? Okay.
So where do you walk?
On a track. There's a track in the right side of our school.
So how many times do you get around that track on a typical recess?
Sometimes we don't get to run on it or walk.
When you do, how many-- how many laps do you do each time you do it?
In the 10s.
In the 10s. Usually around 10 laps. Every recess.
So it's a voluntary activity. Why is it that you guys have chosen to work so hard at that? Is there something that has motivated you to want to do all that walking? Do you like to walk?
Yeah.
You like to run.
Or run.
How many laps do you think you could walk without stopping?
15 or 16.
15 or 16? What about you, Veda?
I'll bet you 18 or 20.
They did each wear their-- they each have a Mileage Club badge. It's personalized for every student. It makes my job of counting their laps a lot easier. I'm able to scan their QR code badge, so I know every time they pass me, I can tell them how many laps they're at. And then with that, in recognition of their mileage accomplishments, they get tow tokens to put on their lanyards. So Veda has her five-mile tow token. She's really quickly approaching her 10 miles already. Bennett has already received his 10 miles, and he's getting very close to his 15-mile marker as well. And then, as I said earlier, they both are in a class that achieved a great amount of miles for second quarter, so they received a special star tow token to signify that as well. So the more positive experience we can provide with them, I think these two definitely will continue on with their physical activity as they age. So that's, again, something we're just trying to promote with the Mileage Club and get them more physical activity. Active bodies, active learners, that's our philosophy. So we've seen a lot of growth as far as social-emotional growth, physical wellness growth, those types of things from a program like this, so.
How many miles do you think you can walk by the end of the year?
What do you think your goal would be? If you're almost at 10 now, Veda, how many do you think you're going to finish by the end of the school? 35? Maybe 40? 50?
60.
Will you come back and tell us at the end of the year how many miles you walked? Okay, we'll be glad to see you again. Thanks for sharing with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
So we also have, of course, National School Counseling Week, and we have a whole large team of great school counselors throughout the entire district. And we also have a proclamation to read tonight, signifying the week. Jan?
This is a proclamation for the National School Counseling Week. Whereas school counselors are employed in public and private schools to help students reach their full potential, and whereas school counselors are actively committed to helping students explore their abilities, strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development, and whereas school counselors help parents focus on ways to further the educational and personal and social growth of their children, and whereas school counselors work with teachers and other educators to help students explore their potential and set realistic goals for themselves, and whereas school counselors seek to identify and utilize community resources that can enhance and complement comprehensive school counseling programs and help students become productive members of society, and whereas comprehensive developmental school counseling programs are considered an integral part of the educational process that enables all students to achieve success in school, therefore, I, Theron Schutte, do hereby proclaim February 1st through 5th, 2021, is National School Counseling Week.
Thank you very much. There are lots of things that would not happen in our district if we did not have the cadre of counselors that we have, K-12.
Yeah, and I'd say, in addition to that, you know, everyone's roles have been, you know, challenged and maxed, you know, due to COVID and stuff, and the counselors particularly have really stepped up, especially as it relates to helping the administration with scheduling and things such as that in order to, you know, provide the safest teaching and learning environment as they can. So kudos to them for everything that they've done to help us with our return-to-learn plans and the implementation.
I will open the public hearing regarding the approval of plans for the District High School AC project. Is there anyone here to speak to that? I will close that public hearing. I will open the public hearing regarding the approval of plans for the Marshalltown Community School District Anson Elementary AC and renovation project. Is there anyone here to speak to that topic?
There were no written comments received either.
I will close the public hearing, and I will open the public hearing on the approval of the 21-2022 school calendar. Is there anyone here to speak to the school calendar for next year? No comments received.
No comments.
And I will close that public hearing. Moving on to the consent agenda, are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of January 19th? The minutes of January 25th board work session? Are there any items of note and personnel?
We have two retirements that are in the personnel list. Pam Brewer-Michael, who's been with the district since August of 1998. She's been an essential team member in the TLC program since its inception here in Marshalltown. She has served as a 7-12 curriculum and professional development leader and helped all of our instructional coaches, as well as the math, science, social studies, and English language arts, world language, and project lead-the-way departments. She's a tireless advocate for our at-risk learners and our work at Marshalltown Learning Academy. Pam has a heart for equity and Marshalltown in general, and will be dearly missed by all of us upon her retirement. Also, Jim Langema, who's been with the district for nearly 16 years. Jim took up teaching in Marsh Town as a second career. He's been a critical member of our fourth-grade teaching team. His dedication, willingness to learn new things, and his generosity will be greatly missed by the Woodbury Elementary School team. Both of these individuals are really top-rate people who I've either known through the Marsh Town connection or have gotten to know over the course of the last five years by working closely with them, and they are truly two people whose shoes will be difficult to fill. So we do wish them best in their well-earned retirement, and look forward to the remaining days we have this year to work with them.
Moving on to the interagency agreements and contracts, we have a quote with Power School Group for the Unified Talent Smart Find Express Platform, which will replace ESOP in the amount of $11,206.80. We have a proposal for a partial topographic survey of Franklin from Clapsaddle Garber in the amount of $3,400. We have a Level 1 and a Level 2 student agreement. Looking at open enrollments, we have one in and four out. Are there any items of note in the bills?
No, ma'am.
We have one early graduate added to the list. We have a request to form a technology advisory committee, and you will see listed in your notes the individuals who will serve on that committee. Are there any questions on any of those items? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Heitman, Aguirre, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0. Anybody on the list, Sean?
No.
Moving on to the education part of our agenda, we have Chapter 103 overview by Mr. Kretzinger and Amy Nupp.
Online.
Until Amy starts walking up, then I figured it out.
Hi, Amy.
Hi.
Can you hear us okay?
Yes, I sure can.
All right, well, we're ready to get started. So we've got Matt. Matt, let Matt lead off.
Okay.
We're going to have Amy start. Amy does have a little bit of a time crunch with another obligation, so we only have a few minutes of her time. So if we need to continue-- if we need to continue this on at another meeting, we can absolutely make that arrangement. Amy, are you ready?
Yes, I can't hear you as well as I could Theron, Matt.
How about now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Okay, well, did you have specific questions, or did you want me just to give you an overview?
Would you do an overview, please?
Okay. Well, Chapter 103 has been a rule for quite a while for all of the school districts, and I'll turn on my video here so you guys can see me. There we go. And it was revamped this year because I-- or because there was quite a few complaints going to the Department of Ed, the ASK Resource Center, and Disability Rights of Iowa regarding kids being secluded and restrained for not really serious in practice, that they were being restrained for noncompliance in the classroom, such as not following teacher directions or throwing books on the floor, something like that. And so they really worked at trying to revamp. This was a committee of ASK Resource, and Disability Rights was on. Some lawyers were on this committee along with DE. And then, as they developed this, they went around to all of the AEAs and had kind of a hearing on what we thought about the program or about the rules, and invited all of the districts in to be a part of that. The kind of the changes with 103 have been to really define what reasonable and necessary force is, and really for reasonable, it just means, you know, what is the size of the student, is what's the mental health condition of the student, what's the behavior of concern, those sorts of things. And then for necessary, you know, why is it necessary to actually restrain a student? And some of the things that they look at are the safety of themselves or others, if there's physical harm or threats, or if there's a weapon that may be-- that you may be needed to be get-- getting got away from the child, taken away from the child, excuse me. So really, the reason to restrain or seclude would be simply any kind of bodily injury, any kind of safety for students in the classroom or the student themselves, and, you know, a weapon. Those would be the main reasons. We're not going to seclude or restrain for some of the, I guess, less physically dangerous behaviors. There's also a paragraph in there about restraining due to substantial monetary-- ruining of substantial monetary items within the school, and also of non-substantial monetary items within the school. And that's kind of a-- you kind of think that's kind of confusing. For me, it was, anyway. And simply what that means is there are things that mean a lot to the school historically, such as trophies and things like this, and those things you don't want ruined. And so they would be considered significant non-monetary items that you just don't want destroyed. And of course, we all know what significant monetary items are, such as computers and things like that, that could really be a detriment to the school. The people have to be trained before they can do a seclusion or restraint through the Chapter 103 online training with the Iowa AEA online. That's free to school personnel, and it's about 45 minutes to an hour long. There is no indication of how often that has to be done. At the AEA, we're talking about doing it every three years, having our staff go through it, just so they stay up to date on what the rules are for that. The seclusion, the time limit they put on it is 15 minutes. And after 15 minutes, if a child needs to be secluded or restrained longer than that, they have to get permission from the building administrator or administrator-designee. So the principal or someone that the principal's designated to take that on. If it lasts longer than 15 minutes, they're going to have to call and get permission from the administrator, and every 30 minutes after that, they have to call and get that. And all this has to be documented. That's probably the biggest change in 103, is the documentation that is required. Also, after the 15 minutes, they have to, if possible, provide the child a break, such as bathroom break, or to meet any bodily needs, that they need to drink a water, that sort of stuff, if it's deemed safe. And if it's deemed safe, there really wouldn't be any reason to keep the child in a restraint or seclusion, I guess, after that. Also, if they have a communication device or they use sign language to talk, their hands need to be free if possible. We understand if they're using their hands as weapons, we're not-- they're not going to be free, but as soon as they calm down, that needs to be-- their arms need to be free so that they can communicate with the people within the room with them. As I said, the documentation and the notification to parents are probably the biggest change, and that is that parents have to be notified within an hour or by the end of the school day that this restraint or seclusion took place, whichever comes first. So in other words, if it happens at 9:00 in the morning, then as soon as it's done, say it's done at 9:15, by 10:15, parents have to be notified. So that's probably a big, big change for people. And then, they also have to be notified, documentation has to be taken of the incident, what happened before, during, and after the incident, and that has to all be sent home to parent also, postmarked within three school days. You can email it to them if they accept the electronic communication and that, but if they don't, that needs to be mailed to them within three, three school days. documentation has to be taken of the incident, what happened before, during, and after the incident. And that has to all be sent home to parent also, postmarked within three school days. You can email it to them if they accept the electronic communication and that. But if they don't, that needs to be mailed to them within three school days. Also with this comes what we call debriefing meetings. Debriefing meetings have to occur after the first instance of a seclusion or restraint. So after the first one, January 20th, this took effect. So the first one after January 20th, there will have to be a debriefing meeting. And then every seven instances. So it'll happen after the first one and then hopefully there won't be, but if there is six more, you'll have to have another debriefing meeting. And what that is, is everybody coming together to try and decide, you know, what other things could have been done? What could have prevented this? How can this help us the next time if this would happen? What could we do differently? And the debriefing consists of the parents and everyone who was involved in the restraint or seclusion, but also includes an outside person who wasn't involved in that. And I've recommended to a lot of the districts that I've talked to that they think about having their team rep involved in that, who have some experience with behavior and/or mental health and can help maybe determine what other things could be done that could maybe not lead to a restraint or seclusion for the child. So the debriefing is required, like I said, anytime there's physical harm, personal injury after the first incident. If an educator feels it's necessary that they have a debriefing meeting, if it's been pretty intense seclusion or restraint, pretty intense restraint, they're probably going to want to have it. And then after the seven instances of restraint and seclusion, they would have a debriefing meeting. And like I said, all that is, is going over the incident and determining how best to move forward with this so that hopefully we can mitigate it happening again. They have to document that meeting again and write a report after that meeting on everything that the child has, or that the team has decided for the child, including if there needs to be an IEP meeting. Then they would go ahead and schedule an IEP meeting. That documentation has to be sent home to parents. In all this documentation, we are working as an AEA system on getting all fillable forms for all of these. So in other words, you would have a fillable form for when you contact parents. And you would have a fillable form for the documentation that. We're hoping to have that out by the end of the week so that you would all have that. They need to have this documentation of the meeting within three school days, postmarked within three school days. So the debriefing will have to go home within three school days. An investigation, if a parent asks for an investigation or claims that things weren't followed, the Chapter 103 requirements were not followed, then the district must do an investigation and they must provide the parents the result of that investigation. And if they do find noncompliance, then they need to make sure they follow through with corrective action on that. And annually, schools have to report to the Department of Ed the total count of the number of restraints and seclusion. And then the total number of students subject to restraints and seclusions. So those will all be reported to DE each year. So that was basically 103. What questions do you have? It's kind of a sky-high view, I guess, of it. I didn't really get into the nitty-gritty of everything, but that kind of gives you a little overview. Do you have any questions for me?
We're good, thank you.
Not hearing any, Amy? So thank you for your time. And if there are any, I'll collect them and bring them to you.
That sounds great. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Amy. Goodbye.
And Matt, I took the AEA training and I went over pretty much what she said, the compliance. And I'm looking at your presentation. And you're going to be talking about how we help teachers avoid these conflicts with students so we don't have as many seclusions and restraints? Is that kind of where you're going with this?
Yes, I'm going to share what we've done in the past before the revision and what our actions currently are, as well as some of the things we're looking to do in the future.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
One of the things that Amy wasn't able to mention in her presentation was beyond the online training requirements, before a staff member is able to physically intervene with a student, they also have to have an additional level of training, which in our district is crisis prevention and intervention, or CPI. It's how do you de-escalate kids? And then in the worst situation where you actually have to physically manage them, what's the safest way to do that? To try to prevent injury for everyone. So I want to talk a little bit about what we've done prior to these revisions and then also talk about what we're doing currently and going to be doing. Next slide, please. So annually, we go through the online training. As you heard Amy Nupp say, every three years is the current expectation or the way that the AEA is currently interpreting that. But we have all of our staff members go through that once a year. And that gives an overview of the legislative regulation, as well as it talks about some of the situations you can manage differently and how do you de-escalate or work through some of those strategies. We also have three, it doesn't mask right. We also have three individuals in the district who are certified trainers for CPI, which is crisis prevention and intervention. And so every month, we offer either a recertification or an initial certification for our staff members to keep them going through on an annual basis on that. We also continue to work through positive behavioral interventions and supports, or PBIS, teaching kids what the expectations are within our schools. We never want to assume they know what it is, so we want to ahead and teach them upfront. And then we try to make sure that they understand of when you respond in a certain way, you're building relationships with kids, you're building relationships with peers and staff, and that's going to help you find a way to stay successful in school. Last November, Iowa released what they call the social-emotional learning competencies. So it would be expectations for learning of all learners around social-emotional well-being. We've been working to go through those five areas and making sure our staff members know what those are and how can they be introduced and included into their daily instructional routines. We're in our third year partnering with Central Rivers AEA. Over the years, you have heard a variety of presentations about our work on social-emotional learning, things like working with Dr. Abelon in the Cloud of Problem Solving Process, working with enhancing our students and our staff's knowledge around de-escalation and mental health. And so we're continuing to work closely with our AEA to make that stronger for us. And then we work very closely with some of our outside agencies. Center Associates, Gracie May, YSS, SituSea. These are the primary entities that I work very closely with. But as you know, our district works with a variety of agencies. We continue our work around Cloud of Problem Solving, which is a great strategy that helps teach both staff and students how to de-escalate and problem-solve in a healthy relational way. Capturing Kids' Hearts is a great initiative that we've been doing at our secondary buildings. You know, it's really challenging when you have kids that change over every 40, 45 minutes in your classroom. So Capturing Kids' Hearts really helps us figure out, how do we build relationships quickly with kids? And how do we have a common agreement around expectations? We do a lot of training around instructional materials for social-emotional learning. And there's a list there of the variety of them that we work on. So prior to the revision, this is what we have done. And for many of these, we'll continue to do because they're very strong practices around social-emotional learning. In addition, thanks, Amy. By the January 20th deadline that the Department of Education released, we had all of our staff members work through the online community or the online training through Chapter 103. We also, because of the requirement is that we need to have our community partners go through that, we have been working with them to get that accomplished as well. And many of them have met that expectation. And those who haven't have a plan to get that done very soon. Last board meeting, we had a variety of policies that you updated. And those policies had a lot of the things that Amy Nupp was talking about on what does the briefing mean? What does the documentation for de-escalation, for seclusion or restraint, parent letters? That was all in there in some of those exhibits. We've prepared for the updated reporting requirements and that has been shared with our administration. And they're sharing that down through their building staff. We're working to make sure that people who need that next level of training with that CPI are getting that. Most of our people already have that level of training they need. So our real focus is when we're onboarding new employees, like parent educators, how are we making sure that they are trained and staying current in that work? And then we're working with Center Associates to enhance our partnership with them on how do we support our community and families? And at the next board meeting, you'll hear a little bit more about what that partnership looks like. So we're going to continue to work on everything that we've started because we felt that even before the revisions, these were really best practices to help our kids be successful in our schools. We're going to continue to look at what additional training and supports different positions need. And we're going to continue to focus on de-escalation because we want to do all we can to prevent actions from happening. And we're going to continue our learning how to support the social, emotional behavior and mental health needs of both our students, their families, and our employees. Because as you know, this has been a really tough couple of years with everything going on. So what questions do you have?
I got it. How often does this happen in our school district? Like, let me ask it another way. How many times a year or a month or a quarter does a teacher have to put hands on a kid?
It depends. So it depends on the type of programming we have in our schools because that varies a little bit. Some of our schools have specialty programs for kids who have very challenging behavior. And so when you have kids who have really intensive, aggressive behavior, you're going to see that more often.
Is it once a day? Is it once a month? I mean, I don't need to know the exact number. Just give me like a...
A general average would be somewhere between 15 and 25 times a month.
Across the school district?
Per building.
Per building?
Per building. Some buildings would have less. We see a de-escalation in numbers as the kids get older.
Okay. So you never talked at all about teachers. I would assume that when something like this happens, it's a stressful situation for the teacher. They have to decide that they're going to physically restrain a student. And then they're very worried about what is the ramification that's going to happen because of that. And so generally, I would be on the side of the teacher. And so you talk a lot about the student, but what about the teacher and their rights and their ability to dispute findings that would happen in this report that you talked about?
The teacher's element has a little bit of information in it. You know, teachers have a right to question any dispute that has happened. And there's a process for that outlined in Chapter 103. It's dispute resolution is what it's called. The other part is that we want to make sure our teachers have the training and knowledge so they feel comfortable when they have to be involved in this situation. But our focus is always on the students and making sure that our students are as safe as possible. And I think our teachers have done a great job making sure that they're doing that and they feel comfortable when they have to be in those situations. And when they don't feel comfortable, they're really good at speaking up and asking for additional assistance.
Is it not the case that in every building there is what's known as the behavior team? That a teacher does not have to act in isolation?
Yes. Every building has a crisis response team or a behavior team. There's a variety of names for it. But these are a group of people who agree to respond when difficult situations arise. And then they have a meeting at least once a month, sometimes more often, depending on the building, to figure out how are they going to be a better support to their staff members and the others within the buildings?
The teachers do have a lot of concern for the students and they really work to keep the students safe. There is an emotional toll on the teachers, though. Any teacher who goes through this, it feels like a failure every time you have to do it. You know, that there should have been some way to have avoided the situation. And so, Mike, you're right. It is really hard on teachers. It does sometimes need to be done. We have students who have severe behavior issues, but it is emotionally difficult for teachers.
It is. And I will say that our teachers, they realize that. They're becoming more, I guess, cognizant of where they are in their emotional state. And so they ask for assistance or support. Or sometimes they ask to not be involved at all and let someone else manage that situation.
I would venture to say that most principals, I did it when I was involved in restraining a child. You ask the teacher if they want some time. And you cover the classroom or you have another individual cover the classroom. Or I've had teachers ask, I had teachers ask to go outside the building for a while. So you just, you provide the support necessary to that teacher to be able to do those things to make themselves more agreeable to the situation when they come back.
Because it's important when they come back to show a calm demeanor to the other students.
Right.
Because they're looking to that teacher for guidance. And so getting that little break. And, you know, as a teacher, I know I always had good administrative support. But it is, I mean, the teacher needs to be able to come back because she's still got the other students.
And I will add to your question earlier, Mike. It may be somewhere, you know, in the 20s of incidents a month. Most commonly, that's one, two, maybe three students who have those ongoing incidents. It's not a variety of kids who are having one or two each. Other questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Shute?
This is where we moved Paul Aden and Matt Gillespie.
Paul, okay. All right.
Yep.
He didn't have an order, what can I say? Didn't have it in order.
The order that she...
Yeah, that's fine.
We're going to move down to Agenda Item 5.05, which is the consideration of financing proposals because we have Matt Gillespie from Piper Sandler waiting to speak to you regarding the board packet and the bond sale that was executed this morning. So we're going to zoom him in and dial him up. He's going to go through that with you.
Hello, this is Matt Gillespie at Piper.
Hi, Matt. Darren Shute calling from Marshalltown. Are you ready to go on the road with Paul Aden here?
I sure am. I'm going to share my screen. Let me know if you want me to begin or if you have a few things you want to say first, whatever you prefer.
I think we're ready for you to begin.
Okay. So hopefully, the board can see my screen here that I'm sharing, where I'm circling on the screen. Can somebody just give me a thumbs up or say you can see that to make sure?
Yes.
All right. So this packet is a summary, of course, of what happened today. I think the board is aware that we were taking proposals for the issuance of $10 million in sales tax revenue bonds. So this first page is showing us the summary of what happened. Below this line here, the bottom section is showing the different proposals that we received. You can see that there were actually seven proposals received, which is quite a lot with sales tax bonds. with sales tax bonds these days. We are accustomed to seeing sometimes as few as one, but most commonly two to three. So the fact that you've got seven is quite impressive actually, even though a few of the rates were certainly outside of what the market is. But still, you can see the low bid, 1.2% coming from Truist, which is a huge southern bank. They just took over what was once BB&amp;T. So if you've ever traveled around the southern part of the country, you've probably have seen BB&amp;T banks on the corners like we see here, US Bank in Wells Fargo. They are a very aggressive bidder on these sales tax issues in Iowa. So that bid of 1.2%, and we're not just looking at the interest rate, although that certainly is the most important, but also the call date is an important feature as well. So that particular bidder was allowing you to make, pay off the bonds anytime you wanted on the payment date. So that means once every six months without any kind of penalty. So it's probably unlikely that you're going to pay them off early for two reasons. One, if you can borrow at 1.2%, it's probably unlikely that you're going to choose to pay that off early. But even if you wanted to, you probably won't be accumulating a significant amount of surplus sales tax, at least not for the next four or five years during which you could pay them off. But it's always nice to have that flexibility just in case. It certainly is possible that you'd have to restructure these bonds if you ever needed to borrow a very large amount in the next few years, which I know that's not on your immediate plans, but you never know what plans may come up. You can see other banks that were giving us proposals, Luana Savings Bank, which is an Iowa bank. They used to be headquartered in Luana, up in northeast Iowa. They now have several branches and actually some very large branches here in the Des Moines area. One of your local banks, US Bank, 1.33, and then other rates, 1.39 through 1.57. This list here is showing us the banks that we sent the proposal to. So although we received proposals from seven banks, which again is quite impressive, there were lots of banks that we sent the proposal to that don't bid. And that's also fairly common. We intentionally send it to your area banks, although we know that quite often they will not bid for a number of reasons. First of all, your issue is quite large. $10 million is a fairly large bond issuance in Iowa and many of the smaller banks just can't lend that type of money. So they wouldn't bid. Other banks don't buy sales tax bonds, as an example. They maybe their board of directors or policies will only allow them to buy general obligation bonds, for example. So simply because we see banks that are in your area that didn't bid, do not take that as some kind of a negative sign that they weren't interested or that they don't like the district or anything like that. It's very, very common for us to see these banks listed that just choose not to bid or can't bid. And as long as we get good bids, of course, although we prefer to work with local banks, ultimately, we're just most important or most desirable of getting the lowest interest rate for your taxpayers and the district. This page, and I'll stop here in a second and ask if you guys have any questions, but this page is kind of a summary of everything that happened. So this main box that's right here in the middle is showing us the repayment schedule or amortization schedule of the bonds. So you can see that 1.2% interest rate. You can see how the principal is divided up over the coming seven years going out through 2028. The reason that there are smaller principal amounts in these first few years is because if you look over in this column here on the right side of this blue line, this is showing the existing sales tax bonds that you already have. So you have some sales tax bonds that were issued a few years ago and they have basically just the opposite structure where they had large principal payments in the first few years, smaller payments in the outer years. So today's is sort of just flip-flopped so that together, which is what this column here and the third from the right is showing us, the total payment on all of the sales tax bonds equates to about $3.1 million annually. So that still leaves you sufficient monies to fund what you've been using other sales tax money for, which would be the abatement of your general obligation bonds if you still choose to do that. This little box down at the bottom, this is just showing you what my original estimate was, 1.1. So you didn't quite get that rate, but you got very close to it. But also a note about a conventional sale method. So today's transaction is what's called a private placement. So even though we are taking bids and choosing, we presume, the best bid, the lowest bid, it's not a conventional sale, meaning we didn't go out to Standard and Poor's or Moody's and get a bond rating. We did not create extensive bond documents, which would be the norm. If you had done that, we think you probably would have gotten a slightly lower interest rate, maybe about 15 basis points lower, 0.15%. However, the negative with that is during, with those conventional sales, for the size of a bond issue, the banks that would have been bidding almost certainly would have required a reserve fund and that reserve fund would have been about $1 million. You can see over in this box over here. So that ultimately, even though you might have paid, you would have paid higher fees but lower interest, the net effect of all that is that you probably would have generated about $600,000 less in money you could immediately go out and spend on your project. So even though you could possibly have gotten lower interest rates, it would not have been beneficial to do that because you would have had less money to spend on the projects themselves. The other thing on this page, this top left little box, the little light yellow colored, obviously these costs are just estimates, they're not the exact cost that you incur, but you're funding what we assume to be approximately $6 million of costs at the high school, $2.5 million-ish dollars at Anson, and then whatever is the balance left over, which we think should be around 1.4 million, that would then cover some of the owner costs for those projects as well as maybe a few of the alternates that you did take bids for. You could choose to fund one or two or three of those things as well. Then before I go to this page, which is on the topic but slightly off the topic, I'm going to stop talking for just a second and see if any of the board members have questions about what I've talked about so far.
Looks like we're good.
Nope. Okay. Then I'm going to go to this page. And again, this is on the topic of sales tax, but it's not directly related to today's bond issuance. But I wanted to review this with the board simply because it's been quite a while since I have been physically with the board to talk about this stuff. So what we see here in this top left box is a history of your certified enrollment and it's the certified enrollment that you are paid sales tax as a result of. So we see that over this period of time, which is a random period, there's nothing really important about beginning in 2001, except that I have easy access to that data. But over this period of time, you've actually averaged gaining 10 students per year, 10 certified students. Now, obviously, this particular year, you lost 87 students last October's count. We certainly hope that some or all of those will be coming back, that those are maybe COVID-related losses, we hope, and that you'll get them back. But then in the table that's here in the middle, this is the other one that I think is most important for today's discussion. This is showing you actual revenues that the district has been paid since 2005 going through 2020. And then it's an estimate for fiscal year '21 since we're still in the middle of fiscal year '21. But I wanted to point out to the board, these last three numbers on the right side, these are per student numbers. And since 2000, well, 2008, the state legislature changed the law so that it became a statewide tax, but it took several years before that actually was completely grandfathered in. But certainly for the last five to eight years, that's been completely statewide and equal. So these amounts, first you see $995 per student. So that was the actual amount that was paid to every school district per certified student in fiscal year '19. And then in fiscal year '20, you were paid $1,037 per student, plus some change. This isn't, these numbers are rounded. But the point I'm trying to make or wanting to get across to the board is that even though fiscal year '20 had at least three months of COVID and whatever was happening with COVID involved, this per student number still rose. The total revenue paid to the district still rose. And then in fiscal year '21, the year we're in now, the Department of Revenue does estimate that it will drop to 1,019, which you would probably expect that because of COVID. But most importantly here, I think, to note that 1,019, even if that's the accurate number by the end of the year, it still is higher than the pre-COVID $995 per student. So my point, hopefully that gives the school board members and any community members that might be watching some level of confidence that the sales tax is a very, very reliable tax, which it is. It's very consistent. It's the next most reliable tax we have next to the property tax. And then the rest of this is just showing an estimate of long-term revenues going out the next 30 years, which certainly won't be totally accurate because none of us have that crystal ball to guess that far. And then we have a page here that just cuts out the little box that I was just showing you on the prior page. So this is the same information from the other worksheet, just looks a little bit different. And this also here is the same amortization or debt service schedule, just broken out into a clean piece of paper here, mostly for Paulette to use for budget purposes. And then the last page showing the timeline. So today you're taking bids and we presume here shortly you would be awarding. And then the next meeting on the 15th of February is when you'll go through the more bulky legal paperwork, but it will all be completed for you. It'll come from your attorney with explicit instructions. It'll be fairly simple and it'll only take you a few minutes. It's the same type of paperwork that comes for every type of bond issuance that you do in Iowa. And then for you guys, most importantly, probably the date you're going to get the money will be March 1st. So on March 1st, that $10 million will be wired to your bank and you can begin to expend those funds to, on the project costs. And if you have already spent some money out of pocket, it's also allowable within certain limits that you can reimburse yourself. So if you happen to have spent some general fund money or other money out of your PAPL or sales tax fund, you can reimburse yourself with the bond proceeds, again, up to certain limits. So with all of that said, does anybody have questions about what happened today or any of these worksheets? And after you've asked questions, if you have any, I'm going to lead you through the resolution, if you're ready for that, and just get that over with so that I know that it was done correctly. But first I'll ask if anybody has questions.
Is the interest rate that you see 1.2%, is that consistent with what all school districts like us are seeing or is there some variability there?
Well, there is variability, not specifically by school district, but more by the structure and of course, day to day. I mean, like I said, you had seven proposals today, which is really a lot. There are days when we only see one or two. And so if that one or two happened to only be First National Bank, for example, of course, had it been these interest rates out here, you would not be accepting. We would be recommending that you reject those bids because those interest rates are just too high. You can get this rate or better, like I said, by having a conventional sale. It just takes more time and effort and expense to get through that process. So this is what's really driving that. And because these larger principal payments are out here in the far end, that waits the average life of the debt to be a little bit skewed towards that longer end. So you might see another school district, for example, that has bonds issued with repayment through 2028. So it might seem like it's identical or apples to apples, but it probably isn't because in fact their debt may be more levely structured or it might be what we call front-end loaded, so the opposite of this debt. And again, if you see that, those two things are not apples to apples. But we have been seeing, yes, in this range, there was a time we actually saw a local bank bid on a structure sort of similar to this, as low as 0.8%, if you can believe that. But that was, we believe, kind of a one-off unusual situation. So more commonly, what we've been seeing is bids that are in this range in the basically kind of 1.1 to 1.4 range for this type of a bond. If these were general obligation bonds backed by property taxes, this rate would probably be as low as maybe 0.6 or 0.7.
Other questions?
Does that answer that question?
Yes, thank you.
Any other questions the board members have? No, and hearing none, I don't have your agenda in front of me. Is it acceptable for you to move right into the resolution right now or would you want to save that for later in your agenda? Because if you'd like to get it completed right now, I can lead you through it and I can just paraphrase it and get it over.
Yeah, we're planning on doing it now.
Okay. Then I will paraphrase it, as I just said, which is acceptable for me to do. We need one school board member to so move what I say. Another board member needs to second that motion. And then you do have to have a roll call vote. So the resolution before you is directing the sale of $10 million of school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2021, to Truist of Charlotte, North Carolina.
So moved.
Second.
Aye.
Faltis?
Aye.
Heitman?
Aye.
McGinnis?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Diblock?
Aye.
All right. That is the only action that you needed to take tonight. If you board members do have other questions that you think of in the coming days or weeks or people in the community ask you questions that you're not sure of the answer to, direct those questions to Paulette. She may know the answer to them and if she does not, she knows basically how to get a hold of me just about any day of the week. She knows where I'm at. So we want to make sure that your questions or the community's questions are answered. Paulette, you're going to be getting a few more emails in the coming days from myself and from all of us in Cooney. So you also, if you have questions, make sure to ask those. Otherwise, congratulations to the board, a very successful sale and good luck with your projects. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Yep.
Bell time?
Yep. So the next topic of conversation is the staggered bus slash bell time proposal. And so the board may remember that on two different occasions in the last five years, we had commissioned a bell time and staggered bus schedule for the purpose primarily of trying to see how we could more efficiently run our routes, potentially using less buses and drivers to do so. And what really prompted that study, in addition to the fact that many school districts do do staggered bus routes, was the concerns relative to hiring drivers. Every year we struggle prior to the school year and during the school year to maintain a strong regular fleet of drivers as well as substitute drivers because like any other position, people are gone and ill and that sort of thing. So prior to COVID, we had commissioned those two studies. The first one was when we were in a prior mode of bus transportation, which was what we called transfer routing students, where all the buses pick students up, they go to one centralized location, they do the roulette wheel of changing buses and then they go off to their schools and then vice versa. A couple of years ago, the Transportation Department switched to a more direct busing route where most of the buses are going directly from pickup points to school locations and vice versa. We have very few transfer routes. I think maybe rural, there's four total out of, how many total routes?
Forty-seven routes.
Forty-seven routes. So we recommissioned the study because the first study said there's just no way that you can stagger with, I think the best case scenario was 45 minutes to an hour, which is just way too long, a stagger. Usually, the desired target is 30 minutes or less with a stagger between start and stop times. So that's kind of the prelude. As you are aware, as we developed our return to learn plans for last year, we planned on how we could do modified in-person instruction. We planned for a hybrid model of instruction and we planned for a virtual model of instruction. And as we got closer to the beginning of the school year in August, we pivoted from our intended plan to provide onsite every day and virtual at the secondary level to providing a on-day, every-day, in-person at the elementary and intermediate level and then a hybrid approach at the middle and high school. And that was strictly based on research and numbers as it related to the number of bodies that we'd have in those buildings and the mitigation strategies that we felt we were able to deploy. I still today would say that as of today, we've probably... I still today would say that as of today, we've probably done as much, if not more, than any district in the state or country regarding that. Of the 29 identified mitigation strategies, we've implemented 23 of them. And the two that we haven't been able to do is the six-foot versus three-foot social distancing, but we've deployed death shields in addition to mandating masks being worn to accommodate that. And then the other had to do with random testing of students and staff as they came into school each day, which has, you know, not been even available to consider in Iowa. So I think we've done a really good job at what we were trying to do, which is not necessarily preventing the virus from coming in, because we can't 100% prevent that when many students and staff are asymptomatic. But we can certainly work hard to try to mitigate the spread of the virus from one person to another, which is where our strategies have really been targeted. Most recently, with the governor's request and desire and the legislative approval of doing in-person learning prior to us being in a position to at least get our employees vaccinated, we've had to really move quickly on what, if anything further, we can do to try to continue to mitigate the potential spread of the virus. I mean, the reality is not a lot has changed, short of people being able to be vaccinated. Yes, people have had the virus and as a result of having it and recovered from it, have built up immunities. But for our employees, that's still a very small percentage of the total employee base of 900 employees that we have. I don't know what the exact percentage is, but I don't feel comfortable that we're anywhere close with our employees anyway. And I would say our students would be the same because our employees probably have a higher percentage of positivity than our students based on the data we've been collecting over time. Nowhere close to getting to any type of herd immunity, at least internally within our system. And so the challenge, you know, the five key mitigation strategies are, number one, self-monitoring, our parents monitoring their kids' health and that if they're not feeling good, don't send them to school, hand washing and sanitizing, which we've done really well at, mask wearing, which our kids have been fantastic about. Social distancing has been a challenge, as I mentioned. You know, we've operated with the American Pediatric Association recommendation of no less than three-foot social distancing, knowing that we're both wearing masks and we're deploying the death shields. And that will be, that has been a challenge even in the hybrid model in some areas. It will continue to be a bit of a challenge with more students onsite. And then lastly, the fifth key thing is enhanced cleaning and regular cleaning of our facilities, which we've certainly done a lot more of, both with the school buildings and the buses. So that, the biggest challenge that we have with full-day, everyday learning with our secondary students, namely the middle school and high school, will be the provision of social distance and being able to consistently provide what's deemed to be appropriate social distancing of three to six feet regularly. It essentially will be an impossibility on our buses with ridership nearly doubling from the red day and the blue days, or the A-day and the B-days. And so by implementing a staggered start, regardless of who goes first and who goes second, in its simplest form, it allows us to use more buses to transport fewer people and thus be able to maintain closely the same semblance of social distancing on the buses that we've been able to do, give or take, the first semester of the school year. Essentially, what that means is that we've been running double or triple routes in order, with some buses, in order to best ensure that there's basically one person per seat, unless there's family members that can sit together. And then we stagger them, every other seat, as to whether they sit inside or outside and across the aisle in order to provide the most social distancing that we can. If we don't do something like staggered routes, that won't be possible. It will be more like normal, even though we've got, you know, 25 to 30% of our kids virtually learning in terms of, there will be multiple students per seat to, probably at a minimum, maybe in some cases could be three in order to transport. So this has all come about pretty quickly. Under normal circumstances, I would never think to suggest that we would change school day's schedule or busing schedules in the matter of, middle of the year, unless we, you know, had a unique and challenging circumstance. And I do realize that no matter what we do, any change from what we're currently doing is going to be appreciated and liked by some, and it will be problematic and challenging for others in order to make whatever adjustments are necessary to make it work. When I had sent out a preliminary communication earlier and in the discussions that I had had with our administrative cabinet, it was with the idea of having two staggers, the earliest of which would be the youngest students, the elementary students, and the second trip and start time would be the intermediate and secondary students. And the reason that we've divided it that way is that essentially, you know, we don't have as many high school students, obviously, riding as we do at any of the other levels. So by having Lenahan, Miller, and the high school together, it equates pretty closely to what we have for elementary ridership. The concept of elementary going first and the secondary going later simply lends itself to a lot of the research that's out there physiologically about older students needing more time to sleep in and, you know, it's more optimal for them to maybe learn if they're given the opportunity of a later start. But the practical reality is with most staggered schedules, I would say you tend to see the older kids be the first to go, the earlier to go, and the younger kids being the later to enter school and exit school, mainly for transportation and caretaking conditions. Whereas I know that I received about, and we didn't solicit our parents, you know, I pushed out a message last night to our staff to give them a heads up of what we were going to be talking about tonight. And that evolved into Facebook communications and discussions. So a lot of parents found out indirectly that way. But of the four emails that I received, one from an employee and three from parents, all of them were, you know, none of them really liked the idea of changing. They understood why we were contemplating it. But three of the four or five were more in favor advocating for the older kids to be the first stagger so that they were available both to pick up their kids after school and/or to caretake them till one of the adults got home from work. So what we're, what we would be proposing, and this is a little bit different from what I had shared with you earlier, would be that Lenahan, Miller, and the high school and MLA would be part of the first stagger with a start time of 8:10 a.m. for the regular school day for students and 3:10 p.m. for the ending time for students. And that would mean that with a 30-minute stagger instead of a 35-minute stagger, that we'd have the elementary start time at 8:40 a.m. and ending time at 3:40 a.m. in order to accommodate that. I would recommend that we implement this effective February 16th in conjunction with the mandate to provide all willing and able students at the secondary level to be in school and then evaluate it throughout the remainder of the year and make a determination at year end as to whether it's something we want to continue to deploy next year or not, after getting feedback from parents on what they liked or didn't like about the proposed change. But the only reason for the proposed change at this time is simply to best enable us to provide adequate social distancing that we otherwise can't provide on the buses.
Questions for Dr. Shudee or Rex?
I do. Early morning for the high school, what time would that start?
Yeah, so early morning right now starts at 7:30. It would move 15 minutes earlier, so the class would start at 7:15. It would end at 8:00. And then they'd have 10 minutes to transition into their regular school day, which is basically is just moving stuff back 15 minutes from what they currently have. The other benefit, although it's not a huge consideration in this proposal, is that by the secondary starting earlier, they're the ones, especially if they're student athletes or student activity participants, who more often than not have circumstances requiring them to leave school early in order to attend events and competitions and that sort of thing. So by starting earlier and getting out earlier, less school time will be missed in those situations versus what we currently have or if we had put them as a second stagger there. The early bird classes, of which we have a number of students that take advantage of that opportunity, were a big consideration when talking about this and probably something that initially pushed my mind towards, again, having the elementary kids start earlier. But in consulting with Mrs. Wyatt, who's here, she felt that a 17, 7:15 a.m. start would be very viable with an 8 o'clock ending time and, but we wouldn't want to go any earlier than that.
So if we're doing this, we're making this change really fast. We're making this change way faster than what we'd normally make it, right? That's what she said?
Correct.
And we're doing this because we want to improve social distancing. That's what she said. That's the main driver behind this. But as soon as they get to school, they're going to be with all the kids they were going to be with. And so I don't get like what we're really accomplishing by separating them the bus and then sitting them like normal at school.
Well, the sitting at school will be a continuation, to the best of our ability, of the three to six-foot social distancing. We're just going to have to-
You got, but you got that, you say you have that, you're doubling the amount of kids in school.
Yeah, we're going to have to continue to be creative to figure out how we can spread those kids out, but that's a charge of our buildings. We want to try to, you know, we've told them as of now, minimum three foot, but strive for six. It's probably going to be more like three foot consistently with this number of students in our building. But everything that we've done, from signage to monitoring to, you know, the block schedule, the hybrid schedule, I mean, everything's geared to try to maximize our ability to create separation and not have large social gatherings where spread will happen.
I've heard from parents and teachers as well as you have, their opinion is the same as mine. It's too much change done too fast for too little benefit. And so I don't think I'll support it.
Will we continue with block scheduling in the middle?
Yes, we will still have block scheduling.
Yep.
And again, for people's benefit, the whole, the whole idea behind block scheduling, which is a popular curricular approach to teaching and learning, was implemented at the time we implemented it in order to reduce the number of crossovers that students had with other students to try to minimize the negative impact in the event. Students had to be quarantined due to, you know, a positive case being identified in the building. So, you know, if you assume that the four or five or six at the most people sitting around another student are within six foot, which is what we had to use for quarantining condition, you know, you could either take that times four under the block schedule or you could take that times seven or eight based on a traditional schedule to know the numbers that are, would be negatively impacted. Obviously, we've been able to reduce based on the state's recommendation to minimize the number of people that are being quarantined. But, you know, we still are actively suggesting quarantine based on positivity despite the Iowa Department of Public Health's decision not to be as engaged in school, contact tracing, which was strictly made, a decision made because they couldn't stay up with the numbers, you know, it was a numbers thing. So we continue to do that, but again, everything that we try to do has been to minimize the negative impact that students and families would have as a result of potentially needing to be quarantined or, you know, acquiring the virus.
Other questions or comments?
The blocks you're running now, you're doing three blocks one day and then three blocks of different subjects the next day? Is that how you're doing it?
Yes, for the, yep.
It seems like you would reduce your crossover more if you did shorter, it'd be too late to switch it this term, if you did like eight-week terms, but you just did the three blocks every day and finished that class and then did the other class the next term. See what I'm saying? But I don't see how you could change that in the middle of the term.
Yeah, it was, it was quite an ask to do it without a lot of lead time preparation. Fortunately, we've got staff members that, in theory, like the idea, that we're very amiable under these circumstances to move forward with it. And I think they've done a really good job considering, you know, usually you'd use a good part of a year to research and study it prior to implementing it.
And these are different drivers and different buses for the different stagger times? Or are they, are the same drivers and same buses?
Same drivers, same buses, but we clean the buses in between routes. We have foggers as well as cleaning supplies. And we do that now even double and triple routing, you know, when we have new groups of students coming on, we do a cleaning, quick cleaning in between each group of students. And our buildings have been very amiable. I mean, we've done our best, obviously, to get everyone from A to Z in a timely fashion. But, you know, there's been some give and take with that in terms of arrival and pickup times, and our buildings have been great in working with that under these circumstances.
May I have a motion to implement a staggered school start bell time for beginning February 16th, 2021?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Aguirre, McGinnis, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 The motion does not care.
Now I'll just say, you know, we will do everything within our power to continue to provide as safe and secure an environment, educational environment as we can. I personally feel it's my responsibility, as it is the board, in doing so. I recognize the challenges with change and, you know, we will gladly accept the board's decision regarding this, despite what we think is necessary in order to provide the safest environment.
I know, already thinking about next school year. So just real quick, I have quite a few edits in our course guide. We just have three courses that are new. So on page two, and there's some highlights, I, on the very next page, Amy, we just, we're very specific about- very specific about mentioning the career and technical programs for our service areas as they align to the state. So that was just a cleanup there. Page three, when you go to the appendix, you will see the three new courses listed there, AP Art History, as well as Prep for College English, and then CCR Seminar. But you will see some other courses highlighted and cross through as they will be deleted, and I'll talk more about those when we get to those sections. Okay, so lots of deletions going on. So done with, Amy, done with the table of contents there. Lots of information in the course guide for parents in terms of things like acceleration. On the first page there, I do have a highlight, crossed out the names of several standardized tests that we are no longer using, and just left the phrase standardized tests to encompass all of those. On the next page, under Advanced Placement Programs, I, we list all the, or I did list all of the AP courses that are available at the high school, and included the AP Art History, which is now available, updated the course retake policy because, because when a student retakes a course, they do not have two grades on the transcript, they just have the one grade on the transcript. And then we, several years ago, Director Miller was involved with this, we adopted a 12-point grading scale, and that has finally caught up, and we will have everybody in the building on 12-point grading scale because it's been a little bit of a nightmare managing two different grading scales, but we continue to do that. Information about graduation requirements remains the same, minimum requirements for admissions remains the same, NCAA and NAIA requirements remain the same. Dual credit options, I did clean this language up too. I believe there's a board policy that's also aligns with our current practice. We have a contract with MCC. The district pays for the students to take and pays the fees for any courses that they're taking out there, especially when they're in career and technical, like they pay the testing fees for the nurses when they test for CNA, or they have to have a TP test done, and they usually do that with the Department of Health. But we also pay for textbooks and maintain those textbooks at the, at the building, and students check those out, and we use our Destiny system to manage that, the handling of those textbooks. So we just wanted to make sure that that was clear, that students do not have to pay for textbooks when they're paying for courses that Marshawn Community School District supports. And that showed up in several spots. In addition, I, on the AP section, wanted to make it very clear that when students take the test and earn enough points on the AP exam, that there, that translates into college credits into schools that they transfer, not just at MCC, but at any four-year institution that they transfer. So just making that clear. No changes to the Accuplacer scores, which is defined there, and that is our alternative measure to showing proficiency. Many students who take advantage of senior year plus are required to be proficient in math, reading, and science on their standardized test scores. They could also show their proficiency on their ACT test scores, or they can take the Accuplacer, which we administer right at the high school as often as needed, and they have an opportunity to study for that Accuplacer through online resources. So we want our kids, our students, to take advantage of senior year plus as much as possible, and we give them lots of opportunities to rectify those measures that prevent them from participating. The next section in Career Academies, again, just cleaning up some language related to assessments, that kind of thing there. We no longer have, the word guidance is taken out when referencing a school counselor, so little semantics there. Questions and answers remains the same. Taking out the four-year plan for the current seniors, it's a little bit different for everyone else that follows, so updating those four-year graduation plans for our students. And our students begin registration in the month of February, so we're moving pretty fast. No additions to the ag agricultural section. You will see in the art department that art history is listed there, that new course that I previously mentioned. And the art department added a few more careers to some of their classes there. In art, in business, I do not believe there were any changes in the business department. In the English department, we took out English honors. This year, we introduced a pre-AP curriculum in English IX and English X. So our students who finish those English IX honors and English X honors will go on to an AP course called Language and Comp, and they were, so this was the last year for English honors. It will be moving out of the curriculum. As well as English Composition with Film Analysis, that course has been offered for many years, and now, and no one's taken in the last four years. Multicultural Lit changed its title to match the MCC course, Minority Voices in American Literature, to align those. And then you'll see Prep for College English. Again, we are offering Prep for College English in alignment with Prep for College Math. They're both remedial courses. We do have some statistics about students taking these types of remedial courses and paying for them when they're in college. They do not count as an elective credit towards their degree. They just have to pay extra money to be, to get their English and their writing skills and their reading skills and their math skills up to speed. So we are offering that at the high school instead, so that they're better prepared for that post-secondary option at whichever school they go to. Next department, English Language Learning, there wasn't any, there weren't any changes there. Family Consumer Sciences, I do, there might have been a couple of courses. Let me real quick check. Ended there. Nope. Yep. So one of the things that we have done to clear up at the high school is the curriculum that's available to our special ed students. We want to make sure that our special ed students have access to the same general education students as other students do. And so the courses that you see crossed off, like Community Living Skills and Functional Domestic Living Skills, we have those courses already available. And so we just create special ed sections for students to receive and have access to the same curriculum that is then modified to meet their educational learning needs. So we don't want to differentiate with them or deny them access to that general education. So many of these courses have been crossed off and replaced with general education courses, so they have access. In the Health Education Department, we did remove three nursing classes that are not available on the campus. They're available to students online through MCC, so we just wanted to differentiate what's available online and at school. They, it's, they're still available. They're just not in the building. Industrial Arts Technology, we did take out Intro to Construction Technology because we had added Intro to Industrial Arts Technology last year, so it was a little bit redundant, and we wanted to be able to have a smooth transition and opportunity for students to get into what is the new construction trade courses at MCC without any holdups. So they should be able to transfer, and hopefully we'll have some kids do that yet this fall coming up as that new program is introduced. Math Department, no changes there. We're good. The next changes occur, Amy, in Science, Conceptual Sciences, Conceptual Physics, actually, is a course that has not been used in a very long time, so we are removing that. We do have other physics courses available to students, so we would hope that they would join into those. Iowa Financial Literacy, just a small tweak in that one. This course is now available to all grade nine. It started as a governor or a legislative mandate a few years ago, and we finally have caught everybody up. And now it's just a regular course that all ninth graders take when they, when they come in. So we're good there. And again, just other things like Intro to Psychology is a semester course available through MCC at the high school. The students were taking Advanced Psych and then taking Intro to Psych, which didn't seem to make sense to me. And so this year, when we ran into hybrid and needed more staffing, we squinched down the subjects and then said, well, you know, the kids are doing this all the time, taking an online course, Intro to Psych, why do they need a whole year? Why don't we just keep it a semester? That's, so that's what we did there. We dropped that prerequisite, and they just jumped right into Intro to Psych. They can take a Gen Psych before this if they want to, but it's not required. Just their regular prerequisites. Again, cleaning, doing more cleaning up in specialized courses, all the courses that are crossed off there are giving our special ed students access to a Gen Ed curriculum. They don't need a special ed curriculum. And then you will see our CCR, or College and Career Readiness Seminar. Our students are doing so many things in the past would have been called homeroom. This year, it's called specials because they're not transitioning to homeroom. But they're working in Zello a lot. Zello's our new career and college readiness platform, and they'll also register through, register through there, so we wanted to give them credit. And some, some kids will not need that extra credit, but some kids do. It's a lot of work that they do in that 30 minutes in Zello. So, and it's not just in Zello, but it's all of our college and career readiness curriculum that we do is required by the state. Almost wrapping it up here, sorry for the delay. One of the things that I didn't include in this document, it has to do with fire science, Amy, if you can find that just right after work experience. And we were visiting with Assistant Chief Criss Cross today about the upcoming firefighter one class in the spring, or excuse me, in the fall. Very intense program, and there are some times when students will need to participate in their clinicals on Saturday, so we wanted to be upfront with students. And so that statement will be included in the course guide, so that if they choose firefighter one, they understand that they will have to potentially attend some classes on Saturday. There's like over 3,000, almost 5,000 hours of time in the classroom and clinicals that they have to put on or in. But when they're done, they will have a certification in fire science and would be eligible to apply for jobs at the Marshawn Fire Department. Last changes are, occur in the last department on, again, just removal of these additional special ed courses that deny our special ed students access to the Gen Ed curriculum. So 120 pages. Hopefully, we'll get down to less than 100 after all those deals.
Going back to the fire science, they would also acquire an EMT certification or endorsement right as part of that?
Absolutely, then. And this is a wonderful collaboration between Kirkwood as well as MCC to bring this to our Marshalltown students, and we're hoping we got a couple of students in the surrounding districts joining that program. So, pretty exciting.
Jackie, I'm always, I've been through several of these now, and it's amazing the number of courses that you offer kids. I think you do a really good job of giving a broad-
Thank you.
-broad selection of courses.
Thank you. I did run schedules, second semester schedules, and just the second semester schedules, there's 21,000 pieces of data for our 1,000 students who are attending the school. So it's a lot to manage.
Questions or comments for Jackie? I have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 Marshalltown High School Course Guide as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Altus Miller, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed the same? The motion carries. Six, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good night.
It's Serene Kaylee.
All right. So this past week at the high school, there was a virtual orchestra concert, so it included all the students in the orchestra program. So the kids that are going in school and that are doing it online were included in this, and they chose some small groups and decided to perform some pieces for everyone. KDAO website did broadcast it for everyone to watch. Then also Larry Jackson visited the Roundhouse. He was abducted in the National Wrestling Hall of Fame in Iowa Chapter last fall. So he came in and celebrated at MHS with the wrestlers. So he was an alumni of the class of 1981.
All right, and for upcoming events, the National Honor Society is holding, they're hosting a project called Peace of Mind, and that's kind of since students have been going through a lot with COVID and with isolation and all that sort of stuff. They wanted to brighten their days by offering them a piece of candy, as well as some advice for mental health and just keeping like a good lifestyle to support their mental health. And spring sports are also starting up soon, like girls and boys track starts March 1st, as well as soccer.
All right, and then our basketball teams, our girls' basketball are playing tonight at Johnston, so varsity should be starting here soon, and hopefully they bring home a win. And, let's see, they play at Ankeny this week on the 5th, and then they also play Urbendale on the 6th, so the girls are pretty busy this week. Then along with the boys, they are in Des Moines North tonight, and JV and varsity Tuesday, February 2nd, they're in Johnston. Then the 5th, they're in Ankeny, and then the varsity game Saturday, February 6th, is in Urbendale. So the boys are also pretty busy this week with games.
And then for boys swimming, the boys varsity has, is playing, is swimming district at Johnston this come in February 6th, and then boys wrestling at Waki on February 4th.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
I may just go ahead and leave this one up and then just talk about my next two unless you want to watch me run back and forth, which is fine, too. So last time I asked to be able to go out and get, to request for proposals for E-Rate Category 1, and that was our internet service provider and WAN, our wide area network, to supply internet to all of our buildings. Tonight, I'm asking for the second piece of E-Rate to go out for proposals, and that is our Category 2, which is actual networking components and equipment and even licenses. So Mike Britt and I, our network and security specialist, have met a few times with HBS, Heartland Business, and we had looked at all of our model numbers, looked at the age of our equipment, whether it was going out of support, which means it might still work, but we're not able to get the emergency support we might need for it, or it's end of life, which means it's no longer going to work in our systems, it's no longer going to update, it's no longer secure, we can't have it. So we put together a proposal, and this RFP actually outlines the quantities of what it is that we're looking for. Basically, we need to replace a good number of switches. That's just what runs our internet within our buildings. It also runs our Internet of Things, our copiers, our phones, and those sorts of things. And then we also have a bunch of access points, which is how students get wireless, teachers get wireless accent, access. That 16 of those are end of life, and we absolutely have to replace those. And then we actually are asking for 57- And then we actually are asking for 57 additional wireless access points, and that's just as we've gotten creative and used all of our buildings for space. We've just found a lot of areas where we didn't have coverage because we hadn't really needed it in the past. So we're asking to replace some, add more, and then over the next few years, we'll go about replacing our entire network. So all I'm asking for here is that I can get some proposals for that.
Questions?
No.
May I have a motion to approve a request for proposal for CAT 2 E-Rate equipment, including switches, access points, and wireless controllers as presented?
Move for approval. Second.
Miller Aguere, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries 6-5-0.
I will pull them up since those are very specific numbers. Okay, so in December, I had also asked to go out for RFP, that Request for Proposal, for our typical Chromebook replacement. So that is a replacement cycle that we had already talked about and had approved. And that was three grades, some carts, and cases for those devices. And I would like to recommend that CDWG get that bid and that we go ahead and purchase. It would be 1,180 Acer 311s, the same amount of Google licenses, which you have to purchase to be able to manage them, gumdrop cases and carts.
Question?
So I'd like to recommend that we go ahead and buy that.
Questions? This is not, why is the Google license a different price for certain bidders? It seems like the license should cost what the license costs, or is that just a silly question?
It's not a silly question, and it's actually not a different price. It's, should be $25 for each. Oh, okay, I see. Some people will actually take a hit in the cost of that to get your bid.
Okay.
But the cost through Google is $25.
Okay. Anything else?
Move for approval.
Second.
Was that Jan the second? Or Sarah? I'm sorry. Miller, Altis, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries 5 to 0.
Okay.
Spending some money tonight.
It's just what I do. I come and ask for a lot of money. So then the next Request for Proposal that I had asked to go out for was, remember when I asked if we could switch from Chromebooks for teachers to an actual PC laptop? That replaces the towers that's already in their room, and by tower, I mean a desktop computer is already in the classrooms. We were going to replace those anyway. We think it'd be better to go with a more mobile option, secure option, and one that adds more functionality than their Chromebooks. So I have three bids here, and the winning bid is SHI. And I would like to recommend that we purchase those laptops.
Well, I see that the plan is to pay for this out of ESER Part II funds. Could you elaborate a little bit?
Correct. So we just received notice a couple of weeks ago that we would be receiving additional funding from the federal government for COVID-related purposes under the CARES Act, which we're referring to as ESER Part II. The allocation for our school district is $3.9 million. So we will be using that funding for several COVID-related expenses, including this one.
So Sean, maybe I can elaborate as well. We did, in looking at some of the things we were asking our teachers to do with the Chromebook, specifically as it related to COVID, some of the virtual learning, some of the hybrid learning, putting things on Google Meet, and then asking them to run other applications, we were running into a capability issue with the Chromebook, so we felt like it was a valid point that it was a COVID expense.
Yeah, you often have so many, because you're trying to share screens and you have a lot of different programs running at the same time, and Chromebooks can't handle it.
So just for clarification, so the laptop will take the place of what previously has been a desktop plus Chromebook solution, right?
Yes, and there will be an extra Chromebook in each room, since we still have a couple of years on the Chromebooks that the teachers have. So we're not taking anything away from them. They'll keep the Chromebook, but it will replace what we were going to replace. We're just doing it in a more mobile way.
So even though we're using one-time funding to support the purchase, it's part of the regular replacement cycle for teacher workstations?
Yes, we had that budgeted for anyway.
Okay. Other questions? I would take a motion to award SHI the bid for classroom replacement computers in the amount of $321,356.20.
So moved.
Second.
Aguere McGinnis, all those in.
Sarah.
Really? She leaned into her microphone and everything. All right. Aguere Altis, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries 5 to 0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Next up is the deliberation on the 21-22 school year calendar. Dr. Schutte, do you want to?
Yep, I'll be real concise. So at the last meeting, we talked through the proposed 21-22 school year calendar, very closely mirrors what was presented to the board a year ago, with minor changes relative to a school calendar that incorporates spring break. We don't have a school break in this year's calendar, and when that calendar was presented, I had shared that we'd look at doing an alternate calendar to try to appease spring break versus non-spring break people. This incorporates, it has 190 teacher contact days, 177 of which are student contact days, similar to this year's original calendar. Parent-teacher conferences are a part of that, as far as the Friday conferences are part of the 177. We've got 11 professional, teacher professional development and/or workdays built in. And then we also count the two evening conferences as student contact time, bringing us to 190 total contract days. The start date is August 24th, and the end date, barring no snow days, would be June 1st.
Darren, this is the one that the spring break is in unison with both MCC, Iowa State, Iowa, and UNI, right?
Correct.
Yeah, good. That's great.
Any other discussion or comment? Not. Is there a motion to approve the 2021-2022 school year calendar as presented?
So moved.
Second.
That one I got. McGinnis, Miller, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries 6 to 0. With that, I will yield back the chair.
We're just in the finance. Are there any questions or comments on the public hearing information? Or the Marshalltown High School AC project? I have a motion to recommend that the planned specifications form of contract and the estimated total cost are hereby approved and adopted.
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0. Moving on to deliberation for the Enson Elementary AC and renovation project. Are there questions or comments? I have a motion to recommend that the planned specifications form of contract and the estimated total cost for Enson Elementary AC and renovation project are hereby approved and adopted.
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis Miller, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Looking at the design services contract for Lenahan AV and intercom renovation.
As most of you would be familiar with the audio implementations that we've made at all six elementary schools over the course of the last three years through light speed. Most recently, we've been investigating not only similar audio systems at Lenahan Elementary School, but also looking at the possibility of implementing video as well as intercom system. The intercom system at Lenahan has been part of our facilities improvement plan as identified when we did work with RSP. We also eventually will have needs to try to figure out cost-effective ways to implement at our elementaries, which we historically have not had intercom system. And then we've made improvements over time at the high school, too. We've been looking at a very interesting solution that incorporates audio/video with cameras being in the classrooms, which would have, had we had that, which prior to COVID, I was not real excited about promoting just because of teacher concern regarding having big brother or sister watch over them. But the reality is, now that we've had COVID, it would have made life a lot easier in how we implemented hybrid learning and/or any type of learning when kids aren't able to be in attendance at school. So it was recommended by our attorney that we work with an engineer and/or architect. This doesn't really require architectural services, so we felt like we could reach out to the engineers that are working with us currently on both the Enson and high school air conditioning project, and were engaged with us on Roundhouse Phase 2 as well to basically manage everything up to the bid letting process. And then since we anticipate them being onsite through the course of the winter, monitoring the air conditioning implementation, if we do choose at a later time move forward with this project, they would be able to help monitor that as well. KCL engineers out of Des Moines. And our intent, if we were to propose moving forward with this project after bid, would also be to use ESER funding, one-time funding, to get it implemented and then build it in the budget moving forward.
Questions for Dr. Schutte? May I have a motion to approve the contract with KCL Engineering in the amount of $21,500 for design bidding and construction phase services?
So moved.
Second.
Altis Aguere, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Was it Heitman?
It was me.
He's gone.
Yeah, Nico.
Okay.
Took a break.
Did you get that? Good. Let's do that vote again. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to the contract for the Franklin bleacher demolition.
Yeah, the Franklin bleacher demolition has been an ongoing thing for a couple of years now, in terms of we've sought bids on multiple occasions, hoping and thinking that it would come below the public improvement threshold for going out to close bid, but we have not seen those kinds of prices. Thus, we do need to have an architect work with us to develop the specs for the demolition. This particular project will be paid for when and if it happens upon board approval later in the year, using Pearl Dollars, physical education and recreation levy, which is what we've proposed in the past. But again, we either haven't been satisfied with the quotes that we had received and/or the timing was off. So the intent would be to demolish and/or raise the Franklin home bleachers, which are concrete structure, and then repurpose that into additional asphalt playground space. Additionally, from bringing construction vehicles in for the demolition, we anticipate what's already less than desirable asphalt surfacing in that area to need to be replaced, similar to what we had to do at the high school with Roundhouse Phase 2. So seeking board approval to move forward in contracting with FEH, who's also involved, of course, in the air conditioning projects to help us with that process.
Questions for Dr. Schutte? I have a motion to approve the contract with FEH in the amount of $15,000 for services related to the demolition of the Franklin bleachers and paving.
Move for approval. Second.
Miller, Heitman, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0. I promise from now on, we'll have a break at 7 o'clock, no matter how long we're here. We seem to need it by sitting a couple of hours. Okay, moving on to board policies. Dr. Schutte?
Okay. So all of the board policies which are before you as a first reading were presented at the last board meeting, and there have not been any changes to any of those policies. So the board policies that were put before you for amendment, which was to align better with the IESB policies, would be Board Policy 204.8, which is, has a new number of 210.7 Rules of Order. Karina had that one. Also 205.1 Compensation for Expenses. That's new number is 216.3. So those are amended. Also 312.31 Fringe Benefits for Administrators and Supervisors. You'll remember we added Martin Luther King Day, which had been agreed upon prior, just hadn't been updated. 409.2 Employee Leaves of Absence. Remove Close Friend from Bereavement, which has never been our, in our handbooks. 507.2 Administration of Medication to Students. Those are the ones that had been proposed for amendment.
I have a motion to amend and waive the second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Aguere, Miller?
Or Heitman?
Okay.
He's masked, you can't.
You know, you just gotta, okay. Aguere, Heitman. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 6-0.
We had two policies that were also before you at that time that were new policies, 210, or regulations. 210.7R1, Rules of Order Regulation, which actually allowed us to delete another policy. 604.10, Online Courses. We also asked for your adoption. So I would, these are based on IESB recommendations. So I would recommend approving those newly adopted policies and waiving the second reading.
May I have a motion to adopt those policies and waive the second reading?
Who for approval?
Second.
Miller, McGinnis, how'd I do? Miller, Faltis. I will get one more right before we're done, maybe. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. The motion carries six-zero.
And then we had one recommendation for deletion, 507.2R, Administration of Medication to Students.
May I have a motion to delete?
Move for approval, Miller.
Seconded.
Miller, McGinnis. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Six-zero. Thank you.
And then are we going to talk about 205.3?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Yeah, this one is short, so I'll read it to you. Being aware of and expressing their opinion on proposed law revisions and new laws is essential to maintaining and creating an education program to meet the needs of the school district community. It shall be the responsibility of the superintendent to assist the board in keeping up to date on proposed laws and in contacting the elected officials who represent the school district. And when I first read this, I thought, well, that's kind of a job description as opposed to a policy. So I asked to be about it. And Darren, I want you to know that we think you do a great job with this. Do keep us up on what's going on with the legislature, and appreciate the fact that you do that. And in case we ever had a different superintendent, though, we should keep it in here. Okay. But I do feel it's really important for the board to be aware of what's going on with the legislature.
So your recommendation is to mark this as reviewed?
Yes.
Any objections? Okay, moving on. Dr. Schutte?
We have a couple new exhibits we're putting before you through Stacy Tool Crawford, 403.3E1 and 507.2E1. One of them has to do with, and it's an exhibit related to the hepatitis B vaccine record-keeping. And the other has to do with the authorization for students to carry asthma medications as prescribed by their doctors. These are two things that we recently recognized we didn't have within board exhibits that we need to get there. These would come back as a first reading at the next meeting.
Other questions for Dr. Schutte at this time? Okay. 507.2E2 has been tabled.
Yep. 501.3, Compulsory Tenants. We simply added hours in, so that hours and days are both reflected. Those were as a result of state law that we just hadn't updated that. I'd recommend, with that minor change we just marked, that is reviewed.
Is there any objection? Okay.
501.4, Entrance Requirements just more clearly clarifies the importance of parents providing proof of age prior to enrollment. And that would come back as a first reading. Also, we've got a couple things relative to search and seizure. And those two were in particular and mainly, whoops. The two biggest things were the inclusion of nicotine versus just having tobacco in there to more, to reflect better the whole vape, you know, issues that we deal with. And then also, in 502.8E, it's removing students' past behavioral history as a condition for probable cause. Focus more on, and basically to protect constitutional rights of students, to focus on the probable cause as it relates to that particular situation, not prior situations. Those would come back as a first reading at the next meeting. 603.1, Basic Instructional Program has language to reflect the current state requirement and recommendations relative to computer science. 605.4R on graduation requirements includes honors English to the, as one of the ways to meet the English requirements. That wasn't in there before. And there's some citations that were fixed. And 604.6, Instruction on a Post-Secondary Educational Institution speaks about the Student Handbook as a means to learn about it. And it takes out reference to PSEOs, which we no longer do, PSEO. Everything's concurrent or dual enrollment through the community college. So all of those things would come back to you as a first formal reading at the next meeting.
Other questions for Dr. Schutte on any of those at this time? Any items of note, Mr. Sotters?
Excuse me, sorry. I was able to meet our primary contact through Insprad last week, virtually, of course. Evelyn McCormick is her name, so I'll be working very closely with her as we get going with this audit process that you all approved at our January 19th meeting. The current timeline for Phase One, which is basically IDing our groups, our focus groups that we want to focus on for the focus group phase, as well as identifying individuals for each group to begin contacting and talking about that process with. And that is set to, Phase One is set to be complete by March 12th, if not sooner. And it also involves, basically, Evelyn taking a close look at, you know, our current communications marketing plan, our current district strategic plan, and several other documents, and just analyzing them and doing her part to come up with recommendations for us, so...
Will those focus groups be virtual?
Yes, they are currently, currently set to be virtual under the circumstances. That is all I had for tonight. Thank you.
Looking at reminders, we have a PSYAC meeting coming up, a LAO meeting coming up, Community Auditorium Foundation meeting. Still lots of time left in school this year. And Nico has the one policy for review for the next meeting. Our next board meeting is the 15th. Have we had any committee meetings since we last met? I don't think so. What have we done this evening to make education better for the Marshalltown Community School District students?
We spent a lot of money today. $10 million in Ensign and high school, Chromebooks, desktops. Big day for that.
Even getting those cameras in Lenahan in case they ever have to learn from home again.
Lot of facility improvement expenditures.
Facility improvement has been on a back burner for a while, so it's nice to get that started again. My quote comes from Gordon V. Hinckley. And that's not the man who shot President Reagan?
David Hinckley.
What?
David Hinckley.
Yeah. No, this is not, Sam Hinckley. This gentleman is a religious leader and an author of the American variety. He says, "Being humble means recognizing that we are not on earth to see how important we can become, but to see how much difference we can make in the lives of others." May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
McGinnis, Aguirre. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed the same. Thank you all for your work this evening.